Good evening and welcome to the Weekly Lawrence City Commission Meeting. I hope everyone had a great Labor Day holiday and enjoyed family and friends and got to eat a whole lot of fresh vegetables and stuff because there's a whole lot of them around. Bob was nice enough to bring vegetables for anyone that needed some, so don't forget them. First item on the agenda were proclamations. The first is claim Monday, September 8th, 2014 as International Literacy Day. I know we have individuals here that would like to speak to it, so if you'd like to come to the podium and give us your names and a little bit of background.
I'm Betty Parks. I've been with our Altrusa Club for 20 years. And this is Debbie Schmidt, who's been with Altrusa for about 15 years.
Very good. Would you like for me to read the proclamation?
Yes, please.
Okay. It's a proclamation, "Whereas there are over 774 million adults worldwide who lack the literacy skills needed to obtain good jobs or to actively participate in the education of their children. And it is estimated that 75 million children did not attend school and many more attended irregularly or drop out. And over 150,000 people in the state of Kansas over the age of 16 lack the ability to read or write. And whereas Altrusa International Incorporated, an organization of executive and professional women committed to community service, has pledged to work toward worldwide literacy. And whereas the community of Lawrence has residents of all ages in every neighborhood who are functionally illiterate. And whereas Altrusa International of Lawrence has provided annual scholarships for women, was the underwriting sponsor of the River City Reading Festival, has supported New York Elementary School with a large donation of books, has provided large print books to Lawrence senior services, has purchased a subscription to the Lawrence Journal World to healthcare access, and has implemented the New Born Book Project at Lawrence Memorial Hospital, and thereby encourages reading and the promotion of lifelong literacy for the residents of Lawrence. Now therefore, I, Mike Amix, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Monday, September 8th, 2014 as International Literacy Day and urge all citizens of this community to continue working together in addressing literacy needs in Lawrence and Douglas County. Thank you all very much for the hard work and important job that you're doing to help folks everywhere in this community and really throughout the United States and worldwide. Thank you very much for your dedication."
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are to be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed? Bob?
Number nine. Pardon me. Number nine, please.
Okay. Other items on consent agenda, other members of the commission would like to have removed? I'd like to have number three for voting. Okay. Any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Yes, sir?
Number seven.
Number seven? Okay. Okay. Any other items? Okay. Then with the exception of items number three, number seven, and number nine, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion made in the second for approval of the consent agenda was made by Commissioner Shum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number three are claims. First part of the claims are to 193 vendors, the amount of $1,842,565.38. Entertain a motion for approval.
Moved.
Motion made in second for approval made by Vice Mayor Farmer, second by Commissioner Shum. Any other questions? All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Then items to four vendors at Rock Track Park in the amount of $632,183.50. Entertain a motion? Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval. Made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes 4-1. That would be Mayor Amix. Let's see. Item number seven, let's see, is the approval of the extension request for final development plan for Maricon Plaza Plan Commercial Development. And this is at Waukerusa Drive and Clinton Parkway. Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name is Joseph Patrick Gilfoyle. I live at 2233 Killarney Court.
And Mr. Gilfoyle did send us all the letter earlier today.
Yep. And I'll be as brief as I can about this. As a homeowner, you surround yourself with comforts of life, okay? You have peace, you have security, you raise your family. And it's really the comfort of your home that's very important to you. So if you can picture this, look out my back door and you see a green belt, plenty of trees, leaves. There's really a protected area there that shields us from Waukerusa and Clinton. On the other side of the tree line is five acres of commercial land owned by Tim Schmidt. And what this letter says here is, is that the plan is to put a two-story office building up and to also have in place 87 parking places. Now, if you'll picture this, from my back door to Waukerusa, there's a rise of 40 feet. Now, if you put a two-story office building up, now you have a rise, you have a huge structure up there now. It's not just a two-story office building, but it's a structure that rises well above all the neighboring houses. So there's a lot of things to consider when you're having that size of structure encroaching into a residential neighborhood. I just want you guys to appreciate that. It changes the character of the neighborhood. Peace, quiet, and security, the things that we have right now could possibly be going away. The next thing about this is, is that the document that I've read, the planning commission report on this, says that the green belt should stay in place and only be removed for the purposes of having to do with stormwater drainage. So I asked the city engineer if it was, if that was true, that the green belt was going to stay in place. And he said, "Well, it's only going to stay in place if it doesn't get in the way of the development." So Tim's project then could feasibly take out quite a big portion of the green belt, exposing us and the residents to the commercial property. So, and in the document it said it'll only be done that way if it is, if it's part of the plan for drain water. Well, I asked Tim, I called him on the phone and I said, "Tim, would you, are you going to leave the green belt there?" And he said, "Well, if the green belt gets in the way of the development, we'll have to take it out." Okay. So I want you guys to understand that there's ambiguous statements going on here. Either the green belt stays or it doesn't stay. And we would like it to because protects the character and nature of the neighborhood. With a, with a project this big, there's going to be a huge storm drainage issue. At the bottom of the hill, as you're coming east down the hill from Waukerusa, there is a storm drainage ditch. The only place that I can see for a detention pond would be down the bottom of the hill, just a few feet from my back door. So I'm concerned that a project like this with 87 parking places and a big parking lot is going to, in a heavy rain, it's going to shed a lot of water. If it comes my way, I don't know. If it brings with it debris and junk and stuff, I don't know. But I'd like you to consider the fact that approving the plan without thinking through a little bit more of this could be a lot of trouble for us guys who have our homes there.
Mr. Gilfoyle, could I ask, how long have you lived at your address?
Six months.
Six months? Okay. And did you ever question what might go on that property or what had been approved or if anything had been approved prior to the purchase of your home?
Well, before I moved in, I was told that the commercial property started on the other side of the tree line.
Okay.
And that, I didn't have to worry about it because property had been up for sale for 10 years, hadn't sold, nobody's interested, blah, 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 blah. And so I took that as the gospel term. Didn't bother me at the time, so.
Okay. Well, let's see if we can get an answer about the detention, you know, that you're concerned about and then the flow of that water real quick, okay?
Okay.
Do you have anything else to bring up at this time?
I'm here with Brett Webb, he's a homeowner too, and Al Bellegarde will be here in a little bit, so there's three of us there that want you guys to consider.
Okay.
Okay.
What we're concerned about here.
Okay. Brett, did you have any additional comment before we start? Okay. Sandra, Scott, whoever, the, just real quick, the issue that's before us, this has been approved, how long ago?
The original approvals for this project started, go back to the preliminary development plan in Platte as early as 2006. You have, if I can just walk you through real quickly, the project and the approvals that might be able to frame this just a little bit. The property is located on this southeast corner of Waukerusa and Clinton Parkway. Mr. Gilfoyle is, residence is located here. This is the creek that you see as well as the existing mature vegetation that's in that area. The property is platted, there's a large drainage easement that covers both that creek and a good portion of that existing vegetation. There is also the development plan. This exhibit just shows you where those lot boundaries are in relationship to the development plan. Phase one of the development plan that is being requested for the extension is really the central portion part. This is that edge of the property. The residential lots are located roughly in this area. The project includes additional landscaping that would be added outside of the drainage easement along the property edge. Just a couple of quick elevations of the building. It is a two-story building with office uses on the lower or on the east side access and the commercial retail building uses on the upper level or on the western elevation. This table is a summary and it is in your packet of the various extensions and requests that have been made related to this project. Each of them have been for an additional 24 months except for that first extension, which was for 18 months. You can see the original date of the final development plan for phase one was in 2007. If you approve your extension tonight, that would extend the request out to 2016. Just another quick highlight of that phase one development, again, where you can see this drainage easement landscape that is proposed at the edge of the development as well as the property line. Stormwater engineer was able to put together this exhibit for your consideration. This overlays the proposed development with the property lines with the existing residents. The area that is basically the center of the creek and the east side of it, the approved plan shows that there's really no proposed change in topography for this area. From the creek basically to the west is where the proposed topography would be changed. That would include probably the removal of existing vegetation, but as we saw in that previous exhibit, there would also be new landscaping added on the edge of that parking lot area. This area is, per this plan, intended to be undisturbed and then there would be new additional green space added along this property line. There'd be some utility easement going in along this property, so that may have some changes there along that rear portion. Just a closer view of that. Your actions this evening are to consider the extension. You could approve the extension with some limitations on further approvals. You could also consider denial of that extension, which would terminate this project and the plan would become null and void. So those are your action options to consider.
Bob, you have a question?
And currently, is there any limitation to the number of times we can extend this plan or any plan?
No, there is not, per this code. This is under the 1966 code, this development plan is.
Then the green belt, you started to talk about that, so about how much of the green belt might be lost through the development of the parking lot?
I did not try to measure that. We had word of the request to-
Can you go back to that blueprint?
Yeah. Go back to this one. Mr. Herndon may be able to better talk to you about what that, that dimension is, if it's from the center line. The existing vegetation roughly goes through this portion of that site, so the very low piece. So the east half would be undisturbed, the west half would be removed.
Also, you said along the east border, the property line where the houses are located, there was going to be additional green space. Did you mean additional vegetation?
Yes. There is an area here that is outside of easement that could have some additional landscape added to it. And then this plan shows additional landscape material plantings, proposed trees, both deciduous and evergreen trees located along that property line.
Okay. You just said could. Does that mean it-
The plan-
Will or would, or is it, is it a possibility that we should suggest that that happens?
You could add, I think, a condition for the extension of the approval to add additional landscape here. We would need to revise the plan to do that.
I was trying to remember that during the discussion at the time of the original approval, and I don't know if it needs to go back to 2006, but when we first, during one of at least the extensions, I think I recall that, you know, that we weren't, we were not to disturb, you know, that easement area through there and that we were going to leave as much of that vegetation as we could. Is that just something that I'm remembering that could have been on anything or was it due to this one?
I was not the planner, so I'm not familiar with all of the history. I haven't reviewed the full file. That, that sounds familiar, but without looking through the minutes, I don't know that I could answer that for you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
When you look at Horizon 2020, I would assume this is recommended for commercial development here.
I believe it's in the code that way, or the plan that way.
And when you were talking, maybe I missed it, but is the water runoff just going right into the creek that's below it and there's no detention pond?
I believe that's the plan. I would need to spend more time with it. There's a, there's a natural drainage way that comes through here, so.
Yeah. It is in the creek. It runs to the east side of the project and then goes in the ditch down to the, down to the east in that way?
Right. The plan also included, in one of the other sheets, some improvements just off-site as well to pick up the existing stormwater outlet and bring it through further away from these residents or through that site.
So other questions, Sandy? Okay. Question to Mr. Herndon, or Mr. Herndon, you have any comments about this? Sandra?
Hi, thank you. Tim Herndon, representing Off Pis Inc. And interesting array of topics raised. And kind of going back chronologically as this, as this conversation has evolved, I think it's worth mentioning that it was 1998 when this property was rezoned from multifamily residential office to planned commercial district. It was 1998. It was in 2006 when the application for Maricon Plaza was submitted. And we went through an extensive evolution working with, at that time, yeah, Commissioner Amix, it was you, and Commissioner Shauner, and Hi Berger, and Rundell. The fifth one escapes me off the top of my head, but we did a lot of work to put this plan together. So I do want to mention that it's been zoned planned commercial district since 1998. The second thing I want to mention is that the proposed project, which was approved in 2006, excuse me, 2007, in no way exceeds the limitations imposed by the overlaying zoning district. So we work within the confines of what's allowed in PCD2 zoning in every regard. So then again, I do want to mention that as somebody asked the member of the public who was speaking initially, when they purchased their home, this was zoned accordingly or has been planned according to the zoning that was approved going on 10, going on 20 years ago. So about 15 years ago. So there's another thing to point out. Responding to the questions about the green belt, do bear in mind that along that eastern edge, and I could speak to that, Sandy, I'm reluctant to start pressing buttons here, but if we need an exhibit, maybe we could pull that, that plan back up. But the, the drainage easement that was along the east side has gone through a variety of clearings, re-gratings over time, and only at such time that when the development is actually implemented, will that be upgraded to the current public works standard for a finished development drainage easement that includes a drainage channel as well as a detention pond down at the low end of the site. Another thing to mention about that green belt drainage easement and drainage structure is that it also facilitates a watershed that extends far to the west of Waukerusa Drive. And, you know, it's the last development before it crosses Clinton Parkway, you know, headed to the south. So the drainage study, which has been approved, as well as the traffic study, there are improvements along Waukerusa Drive, the sidewalks, turn lanes, et cetera, as well as the downstream sanitary sewer capacity analysis, all of those things anticipate the development pattern in the area. Finally, the landscaping is a very specifically prescribed landscape schedule. The drainage way itself, in response to your comment about not disturbing it, no, the drainage way would actually be formalized pretty significantly with an area of check dams made out of stone, a variety of landscape plantings along that drainage way that would replace what is now just sort of an organically evolving stand of somewhat mature vegetation. As I've said, it's been cleared systematically, time and time again, grown back, cleared, grown back. And so there would be a pretty good facelift at the time that the development takes place. So hopefully I've addressed the comments that you've discussed so far and I'm available to address others as they might arise.
Bob? Tim, the finalization of that channel, and you said the final-
Should we pull up an image of that?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Just the, the image that you were looking at a minute ago?
It's like-
Just pretty much exactly what you were saying. Okay? Thank you.
So when you complete the final channel product and you're going to add landscape, are you adding landscape? You're going to clear out some of the stuff that's just there by, by freefall, by, by being there?
Well, it's going to be regraded. It's going, it's going to have to be regraded so that the portion, I'm not sure how to-
You can point to a third, Tim.
Okay. We go. This area, Commissioner Shum, from this point, from that property line that separates the residential zoning from the planned commercial district zoning, from there to this next property pin is 112 feet. And within that width, and the width broadens as it goes to the north, that's where a full grading plan had been submitted for review and approval by the Public Works Department. When that happens, the existing vegetation will be cleared, sod will be replaced in certain areas, retaining walls in other areas, and then landscape screening, actually two, two rows of landscape screening. One row along the far eastern edge of the property adjacent to the residential lots and another row of landscaping that would abut the parking lot over here. Another thing to mention is that the parking lot in and of itself is 63 feet in width, so 112 feet plus the 63 feet plus a margin between the parking lot and the building. There's a pretty good setback between the residential properties and where the buildings are proposed.
I just wanted to hear about the landscaping and you answered my question.
Thanks.
Other questions to Mr. Herndon? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions of staff? Was there other comment? Did I, I saw one other person come in. Were they-
If I may, I've got the document here, the planning commission staff report.
If you could come to the microphone.
Okay. This is FDP dash 01 dash 02 dash 07, planning commission staff report. And it states, "In addition to new trees and shrubs up that will be planted, much of the site's existing vegetation will remain intact for the project." But I'm not hearing that now. I'm hearing that it's going to be plowed under. This is from your document. "The property includes existing vegetation along Clinton Parkway and within designated drainage easement. A note has been included on the plan stating that existing vegetation within the drainage easement will be removed only as necessary to perform, to perform public drainage improvements per approval of city's stormwater engineer." Now, are we all hearing the same thing here?
We'll find that out.
Okay. So just because you take down an existing green belt to beautify the area doesn't mean that it's going to beautify the area. It's going to expose us to commercial development. And we would rather not be exposed to.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, sir. Another comment?
I'm an ex-neighbor to this child and I've lived in the house for 14 years.
Can we have your name?
My name's Alan Bealgard. And Mr. Herndon said something about periodically coming in and, and tearing down and cleaning up the area and then they grew back and then they come in, clean it up, and it grew back. I've lived here for 14 years and there has been no such action as far as that went. Started out as a small buffer and over the years grew to a very nice buffer from the traffic up on Waukerusa. And in 2006, myself and two neighbors came to the, I forget who we spoke with. We were assured by the developer at the time that there would be no effect done to that row of trees and brush that exists there now, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Bobby, you have another?
Question for staff. Mr. Herndon cites a requirement by the public-
Mr. Hernan cites a requirement by Public Works to have the stormwater channel in compliance with our codes, and does that require the removal of vegetation as he so states?
Commissioner Shum, I would state, I believe the record is clear that the vegetation was to remain except for what would be needed to be removed to accommodate the stormwater. Because with the new impervious area, there's going to be probably some channel improvements or some improvements in the drainage easement. But the record is clear, as the speaker said, that the intent is to have that maintained when not revised for the stormwater. I mean, I think one condition that you may want to place on this is to get that detailed plan worked out before building permits are issued, and to make sure that we've got that, maybe even bring that to the commission for review, so that we know exactly what the impact to the green open space is.
Okay, so we don't have a final channel grading plan in hand at this time?
It's likely in the stormwater drainage plan that we've accepted, but in the field there are always some things that could be revised. I mean, if you want to see that before we take final action on here, we can ask Matt Bond to come and present that plan to us and see the real impact on that.
Right now, if we are to approve this, going on what Commissioner Shum's question was, is if we approve the extension, there is a plan in place for that drainage way that is approved as per our code, correct?
Right, it means it's compliant with our code, correct?
So is there any other action that is necessary by this body for the extension of this development plan that we want to see as part of this extension agreement, correct? That's the basic question.
Not from the perspective of being code compliant. If you want to understand the impact a little more about what happens to that tree area to determine if more landscape to the east is recommended or necessary, that would be one issue.
Okay. Then back to the commission. Seems to me that we have a plan that meets the code of the time that it, you know, was put into place, and that the question is whether or not it is appropriate at this time to extend the development plan at the request for 24 months.
Well, I'd just soon wait and see what the drainage plan looks like, and see if there's any other conditions we want to put on it, because this has been extended several times, and it seems to me like it's our prerogative to look at it again in light of, we're seeing some residents that are concerned about it, and I think we ought to, you know, at least take our time, and we're not, we're got, by not passing it tonight, it doesn't upset anything, right? It's still in the process. So I think we just take a look at it, see what it is, see if we need to add or change anything that's already been approved.
Okay. Any other? Okay. So then your recommendation is to defer until that particular item comes in on the drainage area, correct? Or the drainage plan?
We can present that to you even as early as next week and ask Matt Bond to attend and walk you through that.
Okay. No other questions? I would entertain a motion for deferral of this item for a week.
Moved.
Second. Motion made in second for deferral made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is deferred for a week. Thanks. Okay, passes 4-0-1.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Dever abstaining. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for coming. Next item is item number nine, which is to receive a request from the Cow Valley Kickball League to build a scoreboard at Hobbs Park, and action that is to refer this item to staff. Bob, you asked to have this item deferred?
Yeah, I know there's a number of members of the kickball league here, and just like to hear what they have to say. They're quite an association going on, and give them a little air of time here this afternoon, this evening.
So Nick's the speaker of this group, huh? How you doing?
Hi, I'm Nicholas Lerner, board member.
I'm Jackie Becker, board member of Cow Valley Kickball, and if you don't think about us, it's our 13th year here in Lawrence, Kansas. We're a local nonprofit. We play kickball on Sunday nights. It's 32 teams, almost 500 members, and every year we donate a lot of money to local charities in the area. Last year we donated to Penn House and to Social Service League. And this year, we've been kind of thinking about it and working on it, have drawn up some plans to give back to the city in a way, and raise a lot of money to build a historic classic type scoreboard at Hobbs Park, which is where we convene on Sunday nights for what we call the game of the week, and we all watch kickball be played. And we thought it'd be really interesting and exciting to raise some funds to build a scoreboard for Hobbs Park over on the east side. And so I believe I've set, Bob, some plans that were done by architect Mike Myers, and we've talked with HRC and Parks and Rec about this, and we're just kind of excited to get the AOK and go ahead for the project.
Well, you know, the sign looks pretty good. I just want to know if jobs available to sit there and turn the, you know, the numbers around?
We'd love to have you. Start the season's May 24th next year.
That could be my job. I'd be out of work by then, but no, that's good. Well, gosh, I appreciate that. It really is a neat looking sign, so Bobby, it's...
How many teams do you have, and how many members are on these teams?
Oh, it's 32 teams. We actually, every year, we have to turn away teams because we don't have enough fields actually in the city for us to play on. And so we have almost 500 members that participate every year, and it's a 10-week season with two weeks to three weeks of championships. Our championship game was last Sunday, and happy shirt, because we're always connected to a local business. They were our winners this past year, and we have a big cup that everybody wins. And it's all around a lot of fun, and like I said, we like to give back to the community through charity, and this is our project for 2014.
How many people attended your championship game?
Hundreds.
Hundreds, yeah. I have to say, I mean...
We have games at Hobbs that are, the stadium is almost to capacity, sometimes at capacity.
Yeah. And we've been having games at Hobbs Park since 2006, so we've been doing it for a long time out there. And then, you know, I live in the neighborhood, the neighborhood knows us well, we keep the park nice and clean and whatnot, and, you know, and keep our fun, you know, there on Sunday nights. But it's a wonderful experience, and I'm, you know, like I said, I've been playing for 11 years now, so.
That's great.
13, right? Original.
So this is a mechanical sign, it's not electronic, you'll have different numbers you hook on, and there'll be a little person out there that...
Yes, every week someone's going to have to be in charge of putting the numbers up because we wanted to stick it with, you know, stay historical to what the park is about. We found some old photos of what the old signs used to look like back in the day when it was municipal park, and so we've kind of based it off of that, and that's the design that Mike came up with.
So I have a short quiz for the city commission. If you were ordering numerals for the sign, how many ones would you need if you maxed out your opportunity on the scoreboard?
I don't know.
Four?
Let me guess.
It's four? It's a tough one.
Okay.
Time's up.
Yeah.
Seven, because it could be, it could be 11 to 11 in the 11th with one out.
There you go.
There you go.
I thought about that all day today.
Seven.
So, Mark, we should get seven ones, okay? I don't want any paper, cheap paper hanging out there. Looks great, and you raised all the money, and...
Yeah, we've worked this year, we have almost $15,000 raised. This Friday's our annual charity auction at Avon Jakes, and then we have a charity tournament in the fall at Holton Park on September 21st also. So we've been working really hard at it and really excited to give something back to the city.
David?
Commissioner Shum, when you told me about this, you said we'll put it on the agenda, refer to staff. My observation is you ought to just direct us to do it, and if for some reason it's not working somehow, we'll bring it back, but I think it's a great idea. So I think we can find a way to make it happen. I don't know that we need to have any in-depth staff analysis on this.
Just order enough ones.
Order enough ones. We'll have to check historic resources, file code, all those things, but I...
I didn't do the rest of the numbers, the staff have to do the rest of the stuff.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for helping. Good old park in town. Any other public comment on this item?
Every once in a while you just need an easy, fun one.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
I'd like to move that we direct staff to accept the offer to put a kickball scoreboard in the center of Hobbs Park.
Second. Motion made in second that would also include going through whatever agency or any of the departments we need to go through.
Sure.
Okay. Motion was made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, thanks again.
Invite us to the ribbon cabinet sign.
May 24.
Don't forget my job in the spring. City managers report.
Mayor Commissioner, just a few items to highlight. Todd Lowman in our Public Works Department is our Traffic Operations Division Supervisor, and he's been selected to be on a national organization, the International Municipal Signal Association. We're on our way to having 100 traffic signals in town. We all use them, sometimes we cuss at them, sometimes we want them to move along faster, but the fact that they work 24/7 and help us move around the community is a tribute to Todd and other colleagues, so we're excited to have him benefit from the national experience and hopefully bring back some more good ideas to Lawrence and contribute service to his profession. As you know, we were the recipients of a grant from the Kansas Creative Arts Industries Commission to create a citywide cultural plan. Diane has been working on the request for qualifications. As Christina comes here later in the month, she'll be part of the group that will then be recommending to you which consultant to hire as we work on that plan, but we wanted you to see the efforts to date to keep that going, and Diane has been helping us move along that as we've accepted that grant. Got a number of items from our Planning and Development Services Department, a July rental licensing inspection report, a mid-year report from the department as well that lays out a number of different work items that they have, a couple of resource guides that have been put together. One of them is a business resource guide, and another one is a small business certification program for road construction. So a lot of outreach from Planning and Development Services to the community, it's appreciated. Be happy to respond to the questions that you might have.
Questions to Dave?
I just wanted to thank Scott and his staff for the good work on the rental licensing report, a lot of time and into that, and, you know, it's now tracking, it's now tracking everything. And so got a chance to review it a few weeks ago, and just wanted to say thanks for all your hard work, and it looks really, it looks really good, and I'm, you know, it'll be interesting to see, you know, tracking this stuff for really the first time. A lot of these things, we'll be able to have a good ideas to the validity of what we as a body passed and to how needed and necessary it was. I think the postcards went out last week.
Did.
Are those on here?
They are not, and I forgot to bring a handful for you, but they're out.
So maybe next week we could put it on the agenda in the city managers' report so everybody can see them. Really neat postcards, and so, so great, great job.
Thank you.
Thing else? David, thank you. We're on to the regular agenda. First item is consider adopting on first reading, ordinance number 9035, meaning the city's schedule of no parking zones and authorized city managers sign right-of-way agreement with Lawrence Bank for temporary use of two parking spaces at Eaton, Mass. And we do have, the applicant this evening is not going to be with us, and just ask a question real quick if anybody has concerns about this, because he's not going to be here, and staff's going to be leading us through this if we wanted to defer it, just put that out.
It's probably a good idea. I mean...
Probably a good idea? Do you have concerns?
What is your...
That the applicant may need to be here to answer questions about?
Oh, yeah, I think he should be.
Yeah, because we got the downtown Lawrence letter today.
Yeah. And the question of dedicated parking versus a 15-minute, I think is a good, is a very good question.
Okay.
Whether that's adequate or not, and only they can answer that.
Okay, then we'll save time. Entertain a motion to defer for one week.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for deferral by Vice Mayor Farmer, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that item is deferred. Next item is consider awarding bid for installation of a portable artificial ice skating surface rolling system that protect rubber mat around the rink to preservation materials international for $80,748. This is in the area of the Lawrence Public Library.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mark Hacker with Parks and Rec Department. The library plaza is kind of what we view as our newest Parks and Rec venue for programming. So what we're proposing tonight is bringing a portable ice skating surface into this facility. The picture we have up on the screen is the upper terrace of the plaza. What we're proposing is a 60 by 80 artificial ice surface that would be installed through the holiday season, so we'd basically come in in November, do it as, kind of as we do the holiday lights downtown, make this kind of an interesting family-oriented type facility where we'd have some nice play with the library, we could do some lighting over the top of it, and kind of make it just kind of a fun area for kids and families to gather during the holiday season. Any questions you have about the surface or anything I can answer, I'd be happy to help.
My understanding is when you do this, you're going to play down, put down plywood...
Correct.
And put this on top of it.
Right.
What's the cost of taking this down, putting it up? Where are we going to store it? What are we going to do with that?
The storage of it would basically go to one of the Parks and Rec facilities, so we'd go off-site with that. The cost, it would basically be a labor cost. Once we purchase the plywood and the top surface, we'd basically use it year after year. So I don't exactly know the hours it would take to do this. You know, it would take a considerable amount of time, but, you know, I think you could get it in there for three or four months and have some pretty good use off of it.
I know when plywood gets wet, unless it's a special type of plywood that has some resin or rosin with it, that it could be damaged, do you anticipate any of that because this is during a snow season?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's possible. If we have a really wet winter, I would anticipate you might have some damage to the plywood or delamination of the plywood. You may have to replace some of the sheets. I wouldn't think that would be an every-year thing, and we could also do more of a marine plywood that's a little more able to be out in the weather.
So you wouldn't anticipate that to be a big problem?
I wouldn't. You know, and again, we're going to kind of experiment with this a little bit as we go, because we're laying this on top of grass and concrete, so we'll see how it works, and we may try it a little bit out in a park or something first before we put it into the site.
Once this is up, what kind of maintenance will have to be done during the time? Will there be some damage to this by the skates as they come across it? Will there be pieces that need to be removed, or what?
Actually, the skates make the surface better because it basically scars the top surface, so it keeps the surface slick. What we anticipate most maintenance is just going to be cleaning, so if we get people walking out there with muddy feet or street shoes, that we're going to have to go actually in and clean the surface like we would a gym floor or any other surface. I think Ernie has a sample of the product there if you want to take a look at that. But probably the biggest thing is just cleaning.
What's the staff needs? How many staff does it take to operate this?
We'll probably have one or two part-timers there when we're open, and we've basically put that into the operational costs. We think we can break even on this the first year that, you know, if we do skate rentals for $3 per skate rental, we think we can break even on the operational cost. We might make a little bit of money. And, you know, we kind of envision where you could do birthday parties or other reserved events also during the day, so.
Okay. And the monies are going to come from guest tax reserve, sales tax reserve, and the city's rec fund.
Correct.
Will this require a Zamboni?
We tried to get one in, but we couldn't get it in, so it won't go through the gate.
I don't know, there's something wrong about this.
Yeah. The real ice would be really cool, but boy, does it melt every time.
I mean, it ought to be cold at least.
Yeah, yeah. They had some blue colored ones that we thought, eh, I kind of liked the white better.
You just use regular ice skates on these?
Uh-huh. Yeah, they recommend having a fairly sharpened skate, so the ones we rent will actually have a skate sharpener that will sharpen those to make sure we have a good surface on them.
So are we going to, are we going to take credit cards?
We haven't gotten that far yet. I suppose we could.
I mean, I would just suggest that we do that because, you know, it's already...
We take them next door to parking garage, so.
Yeah.
We can do that, find a way to do it.
Thanks.
Yeah, I guess some of my concern... Yeah, I guess some of my concern here is, is we've just gone through the budget season is that, you know, I, I think that it's just one more, it's one more thing that we're adding in and it's an $80,000 expenditure. And I'm having a little bit of trouble with that right now, especially after, you know, going through a time where we told departments, you know, you know, we're gonna take away this, we're not gonna buy trucks, and you're gonna use some of the police department's old cars and on and on and on. I'm just having a little bit concerned right now whether or not it's appropriate at this time, you know, to make an $80,000 expenditure rather than just getting the grass and everything started there. And, you know, we can, we can look at this maybe a year from now or something like that. Let's just begin and get the building done and those kind of things, but...
I mean, from that point of view, the plaza's not gonna change. It can be done...
Yeah, it's not going anywhere, so.
...year after, so. You can certainly do it at any point in time. I think a lot of what we're trying to push is the newness of that area that I think, you know, as we look to roll into summer next year, we'll, we'll really start programming that with movies and try to make that kind of a public gathering area.
Yeah.
If it, if it snows on top of this, it's gonna be okay?
Yeah, basically have to shovel the snow off, sort of, just to clear it. But yeah, it seems kind of odd. What'll be interesting is if we get an ice surface over the top of the artificial ice. Don't know how that'll work.
If you have to, if you have to throw a saw on it.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a good problem.
It's gonna be tough.
I, I would think that would be okay.
Well, the, the only reason I, I asked that, Mark, is because, you know, I looked at the picture yesterday and I was just thinking to myself, how much of a bummer it would be if it snows and kids are out of school and parents want to take their kids to go down ice skating and, you know, in an evening and we didn't have a chance to get to it and it wasn't able to be open. I think that, you know, that would kind of ruin the point.
Oh, sure. No, I think we'd have to commit to this. If we're gonna do it, we have to commit to making that facility operate. And that's hot, cold, you know, if it's, if it's sometime when people want to skate, we need to commit to having it cleared just behind the downtown sidewalks.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Sure.
Public comment? Any public comment on this item? Okay. Back to the commission. It's a pleasure, gentlemen.
Well, I, Mike, I'm a little concerned about taking on another $80,000 expenditures given the fact we're just getting ready to open Rock Chalk Park and we don't know exactly what we're gonna need to, to run that since we, since it's a new building. I also agree with your concept of trying to cut where we can, we have cut and created a budget. And I'm just a little concerned about spending the money right now, given what we've done for Parks and Rec already this year.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Is this a deferred item?
Well, I'll just say, I think it's a great idea. And, and, you know, this is not coming out of general operating budget. And, you know, the, the fact is, is that the library has seen a hugely, I mean, it's been hugely populated every day that it's been open and families are going down there and, you know, utilizing the, the investment that the community's made. And this really, you know, could it have been part of the original plans? Sure, maybe it was. And I just didn't, you know, notice it. I mean, I wasn't around when that happened, but I think that, I think this is gonna be a missed opportunity for us, for a lot of folks in the wintertime to give... I mean, I've heard overwhelmingly positive comments. I mean, I've never heard something where people have told me, "Charge me more than $3 and I'll still do it." And I had somebody say, "Charge me $10 and I'll still do it." So I'm not suggesting that we do that, but, you know, this is just an overwhelmingly positive thing for, for downtown, for our community. And, you know, it's part of our, part of our plan and I think will to, to enhance downtown. And this is gonna be a significant way to do it. So I'm, I certainly understand the budgetary concerns and, and, you know, but we're not pulling from the same fund as those others. And, and I've heard nothing but tremendous support for this in, in the last, you know, week.
Okay. Anyone else? Move?
I, I do worry somewhat about the finances with it. At the same time, being a physician and a pediatrician, to encourage people to do exercise and activities, especially during the winter and giving them opportunities to do that in a safe place, next to a library where they can learn, has some draws to it that are difficult for me to say no.
Okay.
Plus, one, one, the only wife I have is very much for this also.
I understand that one. Well, you know, there's no doubt that this is something that, you know, at least appears to be a very good idea. It's just a question of the timing and, and, you know, I understand the lobbyists as well as anybody, so anyway. Bob, did you have anything? And Dan? Okay. Then the item that is before us, unless there's any other questions or comments? Entertain. Let me find out what we're doing. The item that is before us is to award the bid for installation of the ice rink and railing and the rubber mat and the whole deal to Preservation Materials Inc., amount of $80,748. So if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion one way or another.
I would move for approval.
Good. Second. The motion made in second for approval is made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed? Nay. Passes three to two. Commissioner Dever and Mayor Amick's voting in the negative. Thank you all very much. Next item is general public comment. Any member of the public...
May I ask the staff one question?
Sure, please.
When would that be operational?
We'd like to have it this November. So we're gonna have to get on ordering and get it going quickly.
Thank you.
Any general public comment? Future agenda items?
You got somebody there?
Oh, oh, sure.
Hi, my name's Valerie Les. I was here a few weeks ago about the downtown parking. And I noticed on Saturday that the two signs in the parking garage were taken down saying that September 5th, it would be a now fee level for the top. So I was just kind of wondering if something was going on with that, if you were postponing it or...
Well, right now, we're still waiting for information come from staff before we put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
Dave, you have removed those signs at this point?
Yes. Yeah, we took them down because we didn't have the staff report finished in time.
And so at this point, enjoy your parking. And we'll have it back on the agenda. We'll make sure that you're notified as to when it's gonna be on, okay?
Okay. For me, for updating people, is there kind of a time limit that you know you're gonna postpone it until or...
My, my recommendation to the commission would be is that we would contact you, let it know it's gonna be back on the agenda, do a good job, let the public know it's gonna be on the agenda. If the commission's decision is to change its status, we would then go through a good 30-day notice period, put the signs back up, let people know. When we opened up the Vermont Street parking garage to start the payments then, we put some whoops notices on people's windshields to let them know that the rules were changing. So we're, we're not trying to catch people by surprise, but that's, that's a good question.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You bet. That was all the public comment. Okay. Future agenda items. The items that we had tonight, the, how about the...
Right. We got the request from Wicked Broadband. Their materials that they have submitted, we'll have that on the agenda next week. We do have our bonded note sale next week and then we've deferred a few items. Still working on the mobile food vendors. Commissioner Reardon has given us some good questions to work on as well, so we'll be seeing a healthy staff report in regards to that before it comes back.
Okay. But how close are we, you know, to having that back on the agenda today?
The mobile food vendors?
Yeah, please.
Terry, you had what, 14 questions?
Yeah.
That we got over the weekend. So haven't had a chance to talk to Scott about ETA, but it won't be next week.
Okay. Well, I would suggest, I would suggest that we get it back on in the next couple of weeks before we're off at the end of the month. I think that gives us more than enough time, you know, to put this back on and make a decision, okay? Is that fair enough for the commission?
Yeah.
How extensive are your questions?
There are questions like, what was your experience? What would you do? What things have you found to be good? What things have you found to be bad? Have you found any problems with the food? If you did, how easy was it to find the public problems with the food? Is there anything that you, would you do it again? Is there, what is good about the program? What is bad about the program? Things that I think we ought to know, just real simple things like that, actually.